Select Board Meeting, we are going to have officers swearing in a minute, but right now, we would ask you to rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry for the inconvenience of having come in Maple Street, but the, uh, one of the final activities, hopefully, of the new town hall is resurfacing that floor and hallway out there, and that was done today, and how much longer does it take to dry?
Just till tomorrow morning.
Oh, we can't, so we gotta, we don't get to use that way at all tonight?
Not at all.
So if you leave tonight, we're gonna ask you to go through Maple Street, out through the Maple Street side.
Then where you came in.
We cannot access that other way. So the restrooms, unfortunately, are all the way out and around. So we have swearing in of officers Peter Castillo, if I said that right, and Jeffrey Silva. Welcome, gentlemen.
Chief.
Yes.
And the foregovernors will care if you stand by one of their appliances, huh?
I, Peter Castillo, do solemnly swear that there is no threat.
I have true faith and allegiance to the Constitution. To the Constitution of the United States. Of the United States.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And lawful laws.
And lawful laws.
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the town itself.
And the town itself.
I will act at all times.
I will act at all times.
With best my ability.
With best my ability.
And knowledge.
And knowledge.
In manner.
In manner.
Becoming eligible as officers.
Becoming eligible as officers.
And preserving dignity.
And preserving dignity.
And rights of all individuals.
And rights of all individuals.
I will discharge my duties.
I will discharge my duties.
And exercise my authority.
And exercise my authority.
With integrity.
With integrity.
And fairness.
And fairness.
And impartial.
And impartial.
In ethical manner.
In ethical manner.
I will obey.
I will obey.
The lawful orders.
The lawful orders.
And my superiors.
And my superiors.
And I will constantly strive.
I will constantly strive.
To honor this oath.
To honor this oath.
And promote its reverence.
And promote its reverence.
Amongst my fellow people.
Amongst my fellow people.
In celebration of this oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we go on to the actual next posted item on the agenda, which is the Greenway, we should be calling for open time for the public. And seeing none, I'm gonna commandeer the open time for the public tonight. One of our members, um, is leaving us. This is his last meeting, and, uh, I laid awake last night trying to think of all the smart things I could say that would mean something. Um, but David has given six years, he's the senior select person, he has given six years to the town, and among one of his strongest points is passion. Um, he's probably the only select person who's gone out and collected stray dogs. Um, he's also the selectman who questions everything the most. Ed, can I drive the truck? Can I drive the plow? Chief, can I blow a s- sound a siren? Can I drive the new cruiser? Can I drive the new fire truck? Um, he's always questioning everyone. Um, and he's probably, hopefully, he's made more friends than enemies, but in this job, you're lucky if you come out at fifty-fifty. Um, but based on that, he is passionate about this job. Um, he talks to everyone in town. I don't think there's anyone who doesn't, hasn't heard from him at one point in time or another. So we're sad to see him go. He's going on to be our representative to the Hampshire Council of Government, and with that in mind, this select has this, he is the senior person, we say goodbye, last meeting, and we present you with this plaque.
Hey, when you raise your hand, hey, they give a shout.
I would like to say something before. David is someone you'll never forget in your life once in a while, and this is an attest to it. Thank you, Dave. It's been a privilege.
It's, um, it's my distinct pleasure to be all here selecting. And, uh, back in two thousand and four, I, I wanted to get involved in the town. I thought of actually being an EMT, 'cause I had been in the past, and tried to figure out how I could give back to our town. At college, I said, get involved, and I found out there was a selectmen's race with only one candidate. So I said, what the heck? It was a six-month position, I went down, saw Eileen, and signed on. Um, but it's been a great six years. Um, I think, um, I've learned a lot about being involved in a small town and the patience that requires to, to, to obtain achievements like this building. Um, and because of professional and personal reasons, I feel it's time to step aside at, at a high point, this being this building. I, I think it's very important, as a selectman, to be out in the fields, to be out in the departments, to be out talking to the residents. I think sitting in this room only, you become isolated. And I've made some great friends by going out into the community to, to be involved and to listen to the townsfolk. But again, thank you very much.
Please. We should, we should mention that this town hall is only one of the accomplishments since David's on the board. Actually, Diana, did we get that list together? Did we?
Try to.
No, I did, I saw it. Yes.
See if I can, yeah. I, I wanted to hit the things that have occurred while David has been part of the select board. Ending with this building, um, I think we include two police officers.
That's a whole list of them.
Oh, alright. Since David has been on the select board, not that you're solely responsible, mind you, but somewhat contributed. We've added a vice principal at the Norris, a full-time town administrator, a full-time police, uh, two full-time police officers, a full-time highway worker, this says a three, third full-time police officer, um, a half clerical that we split between board of health and, uh, building inspector. We've had a full-time building inspector coming off of commission, so to speak, onto a salary or stipend. Same with the health agent. We've added a full-time fire chief. We did the larrabee. We did Crossword Park at Helen Drive, and we've, in the process of doing Labree Field. So, uh, the reason I asked Diana to develop that list is the other night when we were kinda down at the dumps and saying there's not enough money around, we couldn't, I was trying to think of things that we did while you've been here. And the list is quite extensive, and there has been little or no impact on taxes above and beyond, um, the normal two-and-a-half percent increase. Um, and now we're on to the Greenway project, which is my segue into that, but David, thank you for your time, thank you for your contribution. David was the one who fought for most of the police officers, um, full-time fire chief and others, so he's leaving a legacy as he leaves us, um, and tonight's his last meeting. So we go on to the Greenway. Thank you all.
Three copies, three hard copies of the study, and some more discs, digital copies.
Okay.
Cover letter, over the, uh, cover letter a little bit, not gonna read the whole thing.
Okay.
Still working with the members, Jan and Rob are here. Essentially, the, the key findings, it's feasible. It's, uh, you know, it's a rail bed. The, uh, project would look to do is run about three miles from Route Ten to Coleman Road and, and be part of the, the greater trail that runs from basically New Haven to Canada. And it's part of a real, um, big network of trails. The study will, will accommodate a wide variety of trail designs, from a soft, single, single lane soft surface trail, which would be minimal work, lesser cost, to up to including a mostly dual lane, both soft, uh, soft surface and a paved surface, which is kind of the, like I terms Cadillac version. The simplest design is about three hundred thousand dollars a mile, including bridges, which the bridges, renovation and rehab of the bridges, is the biggest, biggest piece. And that, one of the bridges is like four hundred and twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars, and the other one is six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, estimated cost to refurb and, and upgrade for, for this use, which is primarily so you can't fall off the bridge. You know, the structural integrity of the bridges looks good at this point. The high-end trail is about nine hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a mile, so being three miles, do the math, John's a little more detailed to that. The multitude of, of, uh, funding sources, there's a lot of different types of grants out there, all of them are matching, so that big dollar amount doesn't wind up being the town's responsibility to build. Granted, how long grants are gonna be around, it's hard to say, but certainly there's a focus, uh, at least statewide, if not even nationally, to develop this portion of the trail. It's the only portion that's kinda lagging behind in the study process or in the build-out So there's the big grants where you get one grant to do the whole project, and then through DCR, there's direct trails, as an example, and that's a smaller piece of money, but it's like a quicker process. You can get money annually, but then you'd have to do the project in phase. So it's time, um, and how much you can do at one time. So that's the study part of it. Committee's recommendations, um, would be as suggested to the select board, if they wanted to pursue it further, is continuing the public communication, basically, as well as tonight, presenting publicly, uh, the study findings, perhaps in another for, you know, another format, you know, the forum, you know, just proceeding in the town, annual town meeting, if you choose to have an article associated with the Greenway on the meeting, and that's another one of our, our suggestions, is to have a, a non-binding resolution on the town meeting, um, to get a feel from the general public, you know, the people on the select board as to whether the town wants to continue pursuing the, the development of the Greenway. And then, of course, you know, seek out our state reps, state and federal reps for, for assistance in getting, getting funds and, and, uh, moving on the project. And then perhaps, if, if that's the direction I wanna go, probably, you know, develop or appoint a design committee to take it into the next phase, um, probably after or maybe as part of acquiring the property, both in probably after the head of the property acquisition.
Well, we actually have acquiring the property these days, or are they, they rail banking it, so to speak?
Um, well, even with rail banking, from my understanding, is still, it is an acquisition process, it's just a, a way, way of doing it, um, which is probably a more affordable way for the town to do it. And with that, certainly, you know, I can answer whatever all the questions. John's got a bit more of a presentation.
Does the board have any questions? Mr. Barker, first.
Yes, Mike. Um, I know Representative Olver was really pushing for the rail trails. Has anyone been aware we're at this point in the?
It's, um, I'm gonna call it a little long, David celebrates Southampton this summer, and he stopped in, and I, I talked with him for, for quite a while, so he's aware we're there, and actually, the aide that was with him, I talked to him a bit longer, um, so at least unofficially, they're aware, they're, um, we had some of these, um, these graphics at the, at the table then, um, so they certainly knew that, and they took notes and whatnot, that they knew we're doing feasibility study and looking to move forward. And certainly was, expressed interest in wanting to be kept in the loop as things moved down the road.
I have a question, sir. In regard to Westfield, I, I see this stops at Sheldon's Ice Cream in that general vicinity.
Yeah.
The town of Westfield has rail tr- trails to my knowledge.
Yes.
How, how close are they to Sheldon's? Are they far away, or several miles, or?
Several miles, I believe, and the kinda unfortunate side is through backroads. I'm not sure what their plan is.
Okay.
To get between, to get past the chunk of rail that the railroad doesn't wanna give up.
I see.
Essentially, they're, they wanna keep that, last I heard.
They were still.
Outside the purview of the study group, but, you know, I talked to the railroad folks, they wanna keep that chunk of, of rail bed in their possession, that they park unused rail cars on it.
Right.
And it's pretty lucrative for them to do that.
So why don't we go on with the rest, rest of the presentation, and then we'll take questions from the audience, if there's any.
John, start at Sheldon, he's the senior vice president of FAR, and that's the company that did this study for us. He's also the principal on this project.
Thank you. As Bob mentioned, our corporation and transportation, uh, the feasibility study for the group's facial diversity, physical topography, wellens, structures, culverts, bars. You know, we wanna take everything into account in regards to whether this rail trail could feasibly be built into a, a recreation trail, whether it be a bike path, walking trail, winter uses, whatever it may be, we could look at this to see what could happen. Basically, I think everybody knows the limits that we're talking about, we're talking about from Coleman Road, um, we're headed south through Route Ten. Uh, there's a couple of aggro crossings within the project limits, that obviously would need to be designed properly in regards to make sure the motorists and the bicyclists and walkers are aware of each other, so safety would be an issue in regards to those. Uh, some of the areas are, the bridges, as Bob mentioned, motor media center, there's two bridges within the project limits, uh, needing a lot of work, uh, particularly if you wanna go ahead and accommodate emergency vehicles over those, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done with the superstructure, we're gonna talk about that, it's talking about the, uh, um, the girders, the, the rails around the bridge, and also the foundation of bridges. So a lot of that was looked at, investigated, and directed to see what needs to be done. We took this project, we broke it down into three segments, and we looked at each one and then just to break up the project, make it, make it a little simpler to go ahead and, uh, to follow. And the first segment that we had is from Coleman Road, and it continues south down to Gun Road. Uh, within the area, what we're trying to show on these plans are areas in regards to where we can go ahead and just get a fourteen-foot wide trail, or whether we can go ahead and also accommodate another separate path, whether it be walkers or pedestrians. We had a public meeting back in October, two thousand and nine, it was, uh, got a lot of feedback, it was about sixty-five people that were there, so we wanted to get information from them, from them in regards to what they would like this trail to be. So we wanna take that into account as we work forward, as far as what can be done, and try to use as much they have. Information that we've got from them for things such as what type of user groups we wanna go ahead and use this trail, uh, most people said they'd like to go ahead and have the bicyclists, I think they're a percent, said bicyclists, but also people talked about cross-country skiing, uh, snowshoes, snowmobile, equestrians, skaters, joggers, you know, wide range, wide range, what, uh, different types of users that wanna use that. We wanted to get that information in regards, the types of uses you want, that's gonna vary in regards to what width you want for your trail. Uh, trails can, trails can be anywhere from, I'd say, ten feet minimum, I've seen some that are eight feet, with stricted bicyclists, but when you start getting multiple users out there for, um, for people on rollerblades, uh, bicyclists, people walking with carriages, you wanna go ahead and maximize that width. So that's a criteria that we took into place in regards to the width of the path and what's gonna be. We also talked about at the meeting in regards to what they would like for a surface, and the majority of people, well, well, they want a pavement. Uh, there's a lot of options out there that you can use for this type of trail, whether it's pavement, stone dust, um, and most of the people at that meeting stated that they'd like to see something that's a paved surface for their usage. You can get a stone dust, uh, dense stone dust that can be used and accommodate most users. Um, the stone dust sometimes doesn't work for the, the on-road bicycles with the thin tires, but I think anything else can, you know, you can certainly walk on it, you can push carriages, you can, you know, the mountain bikes can certainly use that type of use. Rollerblades tough, obviously, the stone dust, but it could accommodate most uses, but, uh, that's part of what Bob was mentioning as far as looking at options and looking at costs, so we wanna get that, that in place. Uh, some of the other major things that we talked about was parking in regards to trying to go ahead and identify, there were several areas along the route that we identified where parking could occur. Uh, safety was an issue that people talked about, um, there's puddle areas where there are barriers that we wanted to go ahead and identify, those are full proximity, and what can be done there. We, you know, identified that fencing, you know, something that's, you know, particularly, um, let's say aesthetically pleasing type of fencing that would provide some type, kind of security, and that, just a metal chain link fence, but some of that is gonna fit well with the neighborhood, so we wanna have, um, you know, railing, landscaping, different things to go ahead and buffer between the trail and what we've, uh, do with the barriers. Um, there's also mentioned some, by some, uh, very few in regards to lighting, that they want, some in regards to lighting on the trail. Uh, that's not something we see much of, um, but a lot of times, it's usually, uh, an activity that people use in a condition, uh, so we, we probably wouldn't recommend lighting, but it's something that somebody brought up, and we just mentioned that with the report. Uh, maintenance issues, I think will be a big issue in the towns and the budgets that they have. Uh, they wanna know what the maintenance considerations need to be, we included within our report, you know, what we would feel needed to be done if it was a paved surface, how much you'd need to sweep it for any erosion that may occur on there, how much you'd need to plow it, uh, mowing, and certain paving, uh, not paving, but striping of the path, uh, so we identified the cost for that also. And then just, uh, just amenities, what else would need to be done, what else do you want put in, include in this path? You know, it's, yeah, it'd be, you know, an area that's gonna be a great recreational area, but a lot of times you like seating areas, uh, for people to go ahead and take a look at certain, uh, landscape areas that they may wanna just sit down and rest, uh, so we identified some of those within this area also. And there's a couple of things to do, parts of destinations, getting spurs to certain destinations along the trail, and somebody mentioned Sheldon's, uh, that'd be a great stop for, for something that could coexist along the trail. There's also this area down here with the library, and another other things that people want, those spurs to get people to those areas. So basically, what we were looking at, we'll just go back to some of the maps, you know, we identified the areas where there are wellens, there are, you know, several wellens within the area. I think only the second and two is an area where we're crossing some of the wellens, um, so obviously, we needed, something that is still a buildable project, but the permitting process, you need to go for the CONCON, and also go, uh, go ahead and get an EMA, uh, according to DDP, some of these things to be careful. What we looked at for the trail cross section, we'll kinda bounce around here, but we had, came up with a couple of renderings in regards to what people basically felt like that they wanted for, for the most part. I think the, the ideal situation is this one that we're showing on the right, where we're showing a twelve-foot wide path, and, which is a little bigger for everybody to see this, but it has an existing, uh, the question trail, walking trail, that was desired, so we included that in that section there. Some areas, there's a few areas along the trail that were in narrows, and you may not be able to accommodate both, but for the most part, we should be able to go ahead and maintain this twelve-foot wide path for the whole length, and again, with the slope work, put in railing and everything else, so that's, uh, basically what we're looking for. Um, you know, these maps, like I said, I don't wanna get into too much detail, 'cause they are in a, a small, so it's hard for a lot of people to see, but basically, what we're gonna, I do is identify the areas where we're close to wellens, where we can accommodate both types of users. Um, the areas that, that there's street crossings or culverts, drainage is always a major issue on, on these types of trails, you wanna make sure you have positive drainage, you wanna limit the amount of catch bases, but you wanna have swales, ditches, natural conditions for, for drains, so we go ahead and look at the topography and identify areas that may be drainage issues. We don't wanna see too many areas where it would be, uh, much concerned.
More restore back, you know, restore the drainage back to the way it was when it was made, and most of it's already there.
Railroad's been there for?
Trails, yeah.
And the canal was there before the railroad, for parts of it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So as, as Bob mentioned, um, we went ahead, we, we took, based on our field observations, um, we went ahead, we came up with some findings, we also looked at, it was eight different alternatives as far as cost options. As Bob mentioned, from the one was one, which was mainly a walking trail where you're gonna clear off a fourteen-foot wide path, use the existing, um, uh, gravel base, minimal amount of work, uh, the fee for that was about nine hundred thousand dollars, the Cadillac version, as he called it, um, comes out to be about a million dollars per mile, so it's a, you know, we'll do about three million dollars for that alternative. As far as feasibility, you know, we get on, I'll repeat twice what Bob said, we looked at in regards to what the permitting requirements are, and also funding opportunities, and those are all identified within the report. Um, as he mentioned, there's a lot of matching funds, a lot of opportunities out there with, uh, MAST DCR, MAST DOT, um, again, going through, depending on what process you go through, tie it puts it to place, and, and dollars, so, uh, we went ahead, we identified that there's five or six different funding resources in there. Um, that's a, a quick overview, again, without getting into too much specifics, but if anybody has any questions, though, if you wanna have an answer.
First, first in the board, any questions?
Yeah, Mike, that's your part. Mike, uh, one of the thoughts that they came across, and we're looking at a possibility as, as East Hampton expands into the flats with their sewage, I think we even asked them to go from a ten-to-a-twelve-inch pipe as we were expanding their, um, the sewage line. It obviously is one of the low points in town, and it would be interesting thought if it could be the spine for, for sewage for the town. And I don't know if that was actually looked at, cost around a twelve-inch line down the center of the rail trail to sort of stop bringing some sewage in, because there is some capacity in East Hampton that they're looking to sell.
We didn't look at that, uh, Mr. Do, but the right-of-way, I believe, is sixty, sixty feet wide, minimum, and wider in spots, so we're, we're talking about, it's only wide enough for a single-lane trail due to topography, so that, you know, the width of the corridor that, you know, the town could be acquiring from a railroad should be able to accommodate that naturally, so you could actually, you know, on the property, do both things and whatnot. Drastically affect the other.
So you'd actually could put down a pavement, or put down a surface, but then go back and then actually have enough?
Potentially, yeah.
Just enough right-of-way to actually put sewage in?
Because of, yeah, because of the width of the right-of-way, of course, you get setbacks and whatnot, but I think the potential is there to?
Okay.
Do that kind of thing.
It was just a thought.
It's a big portion of the, of the, uh, of the cross-section, the three miles, it seemed like for the most part, you had anywhere between like twenty and thirty feet that was pretty flat. I mean, there's some areas where you had sixteen feet and then dropped out, and whatnot, but a lot of, a lot of the trail had, uh, it's pretty good width, that was pretty flat, so, so there would be plenty of area I think to go ahead and do that.
The town of East Hampton has a great, great system. I use it twice a week, and I love it. Is one of these a mirror image of what they, they use?
I think the, the one on the left-hand side, I think they have a typical, I call it MAST DOT type of cross-section, the twelve-foot wide paved area. Obviously, you gotta take into account as far as the safety railing in areas where it's, you know, where you have drainage and stuff, so, yeah, that's, they, they went ahead and it's a MAST DOT standard.
Okay, what, what is that? Did you figure out that would be, uh, for the entire length of this? How much it would be approximately?
Yeah, that, that was in the, in the appendix towards the back, um, which would be like this single paved trail.
Yep.
I would say we match up that, and Ken, I just got on the book out right there.
It's, uh, we figured it to be about between two-point-four to two-point-six million. Uh, the first number that we have up here, the single-pipe path using existing subbase, a lot of times, like I said, there's an old rail corridor, this subbase is pretty compact, and it works pretty well for a bike path, so a lot of times you'll need to bring in new gravel. But we took into account also, just to give a price in case, for some reason, the material wasn't good, but we wanted to bring a twelve-inch base or an eight-inch base, I think, just to see what that cost was, so we gave those options. And these are, I said, these are the, the eight different options that we looked at, the unpaved, which was the one-point-eight, and then down here, the, uh, the one with the, the basic, I'm sorry, the basic unpaved, which was nine hundred and fifty thousand, I'm gonna get ready to heart attack here. And then, uh, then we have the, the highest one, which is the, uh, the dual path, where the new gravel subbase is like two-point- And then we have the highest one, which is the dual path, where the new gravel subbase is like 2.9. So it's a wide range.
And I'm only familiar with East Hampton, so East Hampton has laws on no motorized vehicles and that sort of thing. Is that kind of the standard of the industry?
It is, it is. Usually at, you know, it could go out and just look for the street crossings. A lot of times they have a lot of, a lot of either bollards put in place, classable bollards, so emergency vehicles can come through and knock down. But a lot of times they, you don't want to have motorized vehicles with the bikes now. At the public meet, I know people were talking about, you know, there's a lot of snowmobile usage in the winter time. The town may like to sort of it for different uses, you know, that's, there were so many different types of users that were at that meeting that night that something that the town decided what they want to do.
The watch usage is one out around the bottom and whatnot, the snowmobile on it quite extensively.
Really?
Yeah. And what it does is you don't have to plow it to be able to use it and the public booms it. So like cross country steers, actually even mountain bikers.
Right.
If it winds up being a surface that you can bike on. And on state parks are the same way as well. And they see the coast as pretty well.
In populated areas, I would think they wouldn't want any motorized vehicles and that would be a point of contention.
Sure, like down in East Hampton, yeah.
And I don't blame them.
Yeah, right, yeah. It'd be less than a good mix there.
Questions from the public?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Identify funding sources. My understanding is though that there are certain aspects of the project that funding is not available for. Is that contained in the report or can you dispel that notion? In other words, the cost summary you're providing, I assume is from design completion, including the purchase of all the preparation. But when I looked at this years ago, my understanding was that it was, there were not grant funds available for certain aspects such as designs. Can you address that?
This is, what we're showing here for cost is strictly construction cost. And what we were identifying for funding opportunities was for construction funding. A lot of times like MAS DOT, if you go ahead with a project that you show a feasibility study and you meet with them, if they determine the price is feasible, they can go ahead and put it on like their transportation improvement plan. And then, you know, they'll determine based on this type of study, how much funding do you need? They'll determine whether it's feasible to jump or if some of that could be within the budget. There are other aspects that we have in here for funding that are, like MAS DCR funding, they're not going to go ahead and fund the project in this order necessarily, but they'll fund certain portions of it over time for different, you know, dollar amounts and different grants amounts.
So this doesn't include design costs?
No, no, right now it means construction costs. You know, for what we're looking for, design costs on this, I think it's pretty small compared to obviously the numbers you have here. Although I follow the number, I'd say probably somewhere maybe about $150,000.
And you know if the design cost is something that would have to be borne by the community or is there funding?
I believe there's funding available, I believe also from MAS DOT, if you want that read.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a estimate on the purchase cost for...
No, we do not at this point.
They haven't told?
We haven't gotten that far with the railroad to get to that point.
Your question is no, sir. Anyone else? Anybody else here?
What's, Mike, just in general sense, when projects like this for rail trails like this or greenways, what's the timeline from today? If, say you move forward, you're talking three years?
It's through the permitting process, through the right-of-way process, that all comes into play. For an old railroad bed, you're probably going to need to do like a Phase 1 ESA, which will go ahead and take a look at materials, log and redline, requirement to site assessment. You're talking about a few years.
So it takes a while, so we got to...
It's a couple of few years, exactly.
I don't see where the funding is going to be available in this economy, but it still makes sense to keep going forward because maybe as the economy comes back up.
Yeah, there's a lot of light work that needs to be done in regards to meeting with district offices, state reps, get a buy-in, it sounds like they may probably start it in the town, so.
My suggestion is we, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you too, gentlemen, for all the work and all the time over there too in the feasibility study committee. And I would like to say publicly, I'm very much in support of this concept too. Obviously there's a lot of funding that needs to be worked out.
Right.
But I think it's a wonderful thing how people are reusing these railroad rights of way for additional new uses.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea.
Our company's worked on about 170 miles of recreation trails and we did, I think, one of the first ones in the morning was the East Bay Bike Path, which goes from Providence on Bristol Road Island. And I know when we built that one, there was concerns in regards to safety. It was one of people's backyards, but one of the things that DOT always says is that they're amazing. And then a year, people that came back said, hey, you want to take down the cars, you want access to the trail. It's typically, I mean, I haven't heard too many areas where it's caused, you know, any security issues, any value to properties, you know, it's usually been a bad effect. I think overall, I think people typically are pretty pleased once they're built, but thank you.
To the board, my suggestion is we have four copies of this study?
We have four and we have the electronic copies.
Electronic.
Yeah, we have the hard copies.
The four copies, does anybody on our board want a copy for now? And if not, then the four copies will be available in the select board office for the public to take out. Actually, why don't we do this, since the library is here? Why don't we put two copies in our select board office, two copies in the library and ask that people sign them out so we don't lose track of them? And does this board want to take any action as to either supporting, delaying, whatever you'd like to do as to what's going on?
I think, Mike, I think it'd be important to the older know where we are at right now, because...
Let who know? Oh.
Because he mentioned to me about three years ago, there was like $400,000 available for this or something like that.
And it's the same money that I think Scott Kanatik has fingers on, but that was a couple of years ago.
There's money that was earmarked for us 10 years ago or more. I don't know if it's still there.
Very forward, but...
Yeah, who knows whether it's gotten gobbled up, which is, okay, sorry.
I think we should make a motion to support going forward.
Oh, expected that.
I've got a motion and a second to support the Greenway going forward. Before we go there, Mrs. Ahar here? Virginia? Oh, Virginia, is anything here we could look to community preservation for?
Well, that's exactly why I'm here.
Oh, how smart am I?
That's why you're here.
Why, how smart am I?
Virginia's pretty smart too, because she can.
She can, I didn't even ask her. And so this is something that community preservation might be interested in going forward with?
Well, they might be, and I think it's something we could, you know, this community preservation funds it.
Funded the study.
It was funny and we just think so.
So, all right. That being said, we got a motion, a second, any further discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And what would be that course of action for moving forward if you might enlighten?
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'd suggest that we move it, communicate with Congressman Olver.
How about all of the...
All of the elected representatives at the state at an national level indicating that we voted in support of moving forward with the Greenway.
And anything they could do to help us?
Anything they could do to help.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Governors.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, sir.
Well, I was, Mike, I heard that there are butters in discussions, communication with the butters, mentioned three or four times, the presentation feasibility study. I know for a fact that there's a number of the butters that are not really in favor of proceeding. So, I mean, you can take it on a fast track and I know you might not think it's a fast track because you've been working on it for 10 years, but I don't know of any of the butters that I've been in communication with that have been talked to about the feasibility study and things like that. I don't like to ask the board to make a motion to address the butters' needs so that the rest of the town isn't, you know, making a decision to impact the butters' property rights without taking their...
I'd suggest that it was in consideration.
And my response to that would be, there was several hearings that the Greenway committee...
Early on.
Early on, and there's this meeting here tonight, and there will be other meetings to have the butters express their opinions. And we've been made aware of a butters' opinions, I can't even remember when.
Early on setting up that workshop, I think we sent, I think we sent letters out to all the butters.
Right, we did. We also...
Through the assessment, obviously.
Right, and we also wanted to have, this was the presentation to the board, to kind of see where you were at with moving ahead. But we do want to have a public meeting with the same type of presentation and we intended to directly notify the butters of that meeting as well. So it's just a matter of scheduling that meeting.
I'm sorry, I lost track. Did we do all the motions and take votes? Okay. Thank you very much, thank you, gentlemen. We have to move on.
Can I ask Mr. Burke one thing?
Yeah.
Could you please name the people on the committee? Because we're indebted to all our services.
I was thinking of Rob Sawyer.
Stand up, stand up, Rob. This was a hard work, take credit.
Absolutely.
Mike, the owner was not here tonight, he had prior engagement, long scheduled before, and Mark Iba.
Good, thank you.
Good job, guys.
I'm going to give this library those two.
We'll take those two in.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if anybody, the butters or whoever wants to look at that feasibility study, just sign it out. We are moving on to budget hearings and finance committees. Yeah, the fun part of the night. Where did our finance committee?
About the end, sure.
Oh, there it is.
We need a camel hop.
There is one somewhere around the block. Ladies and gentlemen, before we go on with the finance committee, we have a new person here, Mr. Obeshan, who has taken over as library director. I'd ask him to stand up so you all can get to see him. We embarrass everybody.
Libraries are shy by nature, you know.
In this town, you'll get over that. All right, we're having a budget hearing, Mr. Blanchett. Besides not having enough money, what else is new?
Well, we have copies of the budget in that corner on the chair as you walk in the door and they're interested in picking one up there, over there. Thanks to the folks in the town, all of them sat together. We should also say thank you to all the people who helped make the budget. Lots of folks contributed to the revenue side, because of the numbers that we need to light up on. And many department heads gave up their time on Tuesday evenings to come and talk to us some several times so that we could at least get a fix on what their needs were, even though we admitted to all of them that the possibility of meeting all those needs was slim and none. And so here we are tonight with a budget that on the first two pages has revenue projections for 2012. The projections that we're getting from the state legislature seem to be pretty firm at this point.
Yes, sir.
The House and the governor have both come with numbers. The Senate, I think, is still to come, but they're sort of promising not to cut below the level that the House cut already in local aid. And so we're thinking that Chapter 70 and local aid numbers may be pretty accurate, which is a big change from the last few years when we had to wait until June or July before we knew what some of those numbers would want to be. Other than that, if you're interested in any of the particulars about the first or second page, which is all revenue projection numbers, and the key word is projection, because in a lot of cases we're just using history and a collection from this year to try to make a best guess at next year. I would say in general, we're trying to cap pretty much every source that is remotely possible to cap as we try to generate the most amount of revenue that we can for this year's budget. We've said at several meetings, as recently, particularly in December when we had a special town meeting and we talked about how much free cash is being used to run our current year's budget, FY11. There's close to $300,000 of free cash that is helping to fund this current year's budget as a revenue source. And that's a revenue source we simply don't have for next year. So we started out the process sort of $300,000 in the hole. And you can make up some of that because of course the Proposition 2.5, we're allowed to raise and appropriate an additional 2.5% on our tax levy. But that alone doesn't, barely matches up with the $300,000 free cash. So this is a tight budget, which is why we tried to cap every revenue source that we can think of. And if people have comments to make about the revenues, that's sort of appropriate tonight as well. You'll notice on the second page that there's a total revenues number, which is at the bottom of this page under the column 2012, of $13,555,962. And then the next few pages are expenditure accounts to try to run all the town departments. And that comes out to $13,556,685, which leaves us with a deficit tonight of $723. So we feel like the budget you're looking at is pretty much a balanced budget. But it's only tonight's presentation. We still have comments to listen to tonight from people who would like to make comments about this budget. And there may still be a little bit of room for us to make a few changes to what we are presenting here tonight. Then you get into the budget itself, the moderators have spent the first line and it goes on for about five pages after that. You've got columns of FY10 actual, you've got the FY11 budget that we're running right now, which of course has to complete yet until June 30th. You've got the proposed budget that we're proposing, that FY2012, I'm sorry, FY2012 requested budget is what the department has came to us with. We have in this budget a 1% wage increase for most of the town workers in the town hall, police department, highway department, that kind of thing. And then we have our recommended budget in the last column. So the one we're talking about tonight is the last column, that's the FY2012 recommended budget. That's the finance committee's recommendation. And the last page, you have to get away through all of the department finances, is the community, I'm sorry, the capital improvement committee's work over the last, well, oh, that FY09. You can see what was done that year, what was done in 10, what we did in fiscal 11 we're in right now. And you can see in bold letters the FY12 projections, and you'll see very few numbers there. A lot of the numbers that used to be in this category were pushed over to the right in fiscal 13 because we simply can't afford to do much of the capital improvement committee recommendations this year. Money, we feel, is just way too tight. So the first three items there, the ready-to-adaptive reuse, the radios and equipment in the fire department and the pumper tanker trucks, those are all part of our debt service, which is built into the budget that's already been presented here in the previous pages. So those are taken care of. Then you get down to the $66,000 for the two police cruisers, and that would have to come from stabilization fund, and that would be a special article on the town warrant for our annual town meeting coming up in a few weeks.
Bob?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Correct me if I'm wrong, did we get a new grader, Ed?
Got a new grader, yeah.
So is that $65,000 for FY13 still needed or is that...
No.
So that could be taken off that, okay.
So grader with plow for FY13 is to be...
Take that off $65,000.
Well, that's always good.
Congratulations, Mr. Iba, good job.
Oh, scraper, or, yes, scraper.
Grader with plow.
Grader with plow.
And you'll notice if you look down the FY13 column, you know, the point of the capital improvement committee was to spread out the purchase of major purchases for our town departments in a way that would allow the town to keep up with the kinds of things that our department needs, that our department needs. that our department needs, that our department needs in order to run. And last year, we had to cut corners. FY 12, you can see that we'd be cutting lots of corners, so we're falling behind pretty badly on that plan, which up until the last couple of years, we've been doing a really good job on and haven't been able to afford a lot of those things that really aren't needed. But we're not able to do that right now. So along with the lack of free cash and the real bare bones budget you're looking at on this final page from capital improvement committee, I mean, those are clear signs that we're not presenting to you tonight a budget that we're really happy with, or that, I mean, we expect the department heads are really happy about. It's just the best budget that we've been able to come up with after working for the last four or five months on it. But at this point, I would say, what would you like to say?
I'll go to committee first.
Okay.
Select board.
First of all, I'd like to thank Bob and maybe for what they put this work into getting this budget. And I'd also make note that Bob is not going to be with us next year as well.
Mr. Fleming, Jim Fleming will not be here, so this is their last budget.
Yeah, there are two of us who have didn't run for reelection this year, so we're moving off the board. And there will be, as far as I know, three remaining members holding the fort together after this week.
I'd like to thank you in behalf of the town for your service, two of you. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the select board? I think we should entertain a motion that we, any visions only go down, no going up with budget items, but...
Do you think this is it? This is as good as it's going to get?
I do. I think. I think this is a miracle.
You're a turkey.
I'd like to see this, I'd like to see us say that at the end of next year.
Not to rain a little bit, but we're still not meeting our contractual obligations on our wages, so...
Oh, we are not.
As we got in the hole with, with the highway funding, we went from 52 weeks down to 40, what? So, you know...
It's always been. It's never, it's never been 52.
We're just falling behind. We're not making our payment.
All right, let's focus on, no, any, anything from the select board?
I think, I would also like to certainly thank Bob and Jim and the other members of the committee, John over there, and, I'm sorry, the name.
Derek.
Derek, that's right, sorry. For all of your hard work in this, and I also completely understand, too, that as Selectman Dougal is saying here, too, that this points to the fact that we are continuing to not meet some obligations. And I think there's some very serious takeaways from this, which are what are the structural deficits, if you will, in the town's budget capabilities and requirements and capacities, and what really do we need to change if possible. So there is this tendency, of course, as in any organization, is to get to that hurdle of the balanced budget, and then we move on to other things, and our attention gets diverted. But I think it's extremely important that we continue to look at this budget and why there are shortfalls, and try to think about what can we do as a town, as a community, as a select board, as Hampshire Council of Governments to improve the situation, because we do tend to get here every year, and it's sort of a well-decorated rut. So that would just be...
I would make the comment, we're at the same place earlier this year than we usually are.
Exactly. So there's some, some benefit to that, but certainly, I just wanted to make that observation.
Anybody else? Then I would, any department heads, want to, chief?
Yeah, I'd like to just make the board aware of the concerns that I have with the expense budget for the police department. It's at $46,000. I typically forecast about double that amount each year. I never get that amount. That's based on some projection. Now, what else does cost run the department? Obviously, you can't do a lot of things you need to do. Biggest cost in the police expenses is fuel, and half of that each year, I spend about $18,000 on fuel. Right now, at the rate that fuel is, we're delivering at $36,000 in fuel costs. I only have $46,000. By coming down with contractual obligations, it leaves me less than $10,000 a year to run all other expenses on the police department. This year alone, in part because of the new place cruiser last year, I've got well over $4,000 in unexpected expenses and repairs on equipment. We have problems on our town with our antenna this year, but we've had a lot of unexpected expenses that really dug into what little money I had left to run the department. I don't see how I'll really be able to, by the end of this month, I expect I'll be out of it. We have about $3,000 left in the budget now, with potentially looking at $9,000 in fuel costs by June 30th. So $46,000 is really a meager allowance to list to run the police department. It's not working this year, and it's not going to work next year. I don't know where else to cut. Years ago, we parked cruisers and became a reactive department because of fuel costs and didn't do any proactive policing. During that time, thieves were brazen enough to unscrew the window, drive open window at dozen dollars in full fuel of Group 10 because of lap of police presence on the front. So, you know, unfortunately, you should be aware of that, that shortfall.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I think your views and perspectives are going to be echoed throughout every committee and agency and whatever in town, and we're going to be facing shortfalls. It's just the way the budget's set up. Isn't right, but that's the way it is. But thank you for bringing it to our attention, because when you do go out and say, "I told you so," and everybody else will be right behind you because that's the way they're funded. So I don't agree with that.
And that's what we tried to do last year. We tried to leave more money in expense accounts last year by not funding raises. And it's that same circle that we go around. If you give raises, you shorten the expense money. At some point in time, it doesn't make sense to have people working who can't drive cruisers, who can't drive plow trucks. It makes more sense to put gas in the tanks as a posting. You have to come to that balance, which is what we're trying to do. Appreciate your pain. And anyone else? Wow.
Just being the department head of the, of the library, thank you for your warm reception before.
We can take it back, too.
No. I'm not going to speak to the particulars of the budget because it was developed before my arrival in town, so I'll let the Chair of the Board of Trustees and the President of the Friends Association speak to that. I do want to say for the record, however, two points. One, I would like to thank the finance committee for at least going halfway. I know others will speak about the proposed increase and what that was, but I recognize that was a tough decision, and I'm grateful for the effort thus far. My only other concern, though, is that our issue in the library is one of supervision and staffing. The reason why this petition was made to increase the director's position to be full-time, being the only department head not full-time in the town, was to make sure that we could maintain two adults in the building consistently while we were open. In the absence of a full-time position, I can't ensure that. We have talented volunteers that do it, but volunteers get sick. They're not compensated for their time. That's my concern moving forward. Without a full-time director, we'll have to look at operating hours, staffing, so on and so forth. My staff hasn't taken vacation all year. They're looking to spend down their vacation time before the end of the fiscal year. That presents a staffing challenge. But I'll let the board speak to the particulars. Their request to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Linda Summers, President of Franklin Library, and you have been very receptive listening to us and our request for a full-time library director. And we do appreciate, you know, the fact that you were, you were heard and that we do have an increase in the budget. However, it backfires that the library director is the only part-time department head in town, and the library director has the highest educational requirements for the job. I think Jeff raised an excellent point. What I've been concerned with is just the sheer safety issue in the library. As a former library director, I would never have opened a library to the public on a day when there weren't more than one person, if there wasn't one person, more than one person on staff in the library. It's a safety issue. Not that we expect dire things to happen necessarily, but if someone could become ill, there are circumstances that arise that, you know, present liability issues. And so it's, it's a safety issue for us, too. But beyond that, it's also an equity issue, and it's time for the library to have a full-time director and a full-time department head.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have too much, Dan. I'm Beth Russell Smith, Chair of the Trustees, except that we've been working really hard to maintain the services at the library. We're very excited about our new director. We're extremely totally disappointed that we couldn't offer him a full-time position, so we're asking him to do a job without enough time, without enough money. And, you know, the library's for everybody, and we're less than 1% of the annual budget, and even if you increased his salary to full-time, it would still be less than 1% of the town budget. And I know there's no money, but we really need to think about our values.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kathy Dollar. I'm also one of the trustees for the library, and I just wanted to share one small statistic with you with regard to the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. They do report statistics for all of the libraries by population group, and I thought you might find it interesting that for the population group that Southampton falls within, which is 5,000 to 9.9,000 in population, of the 70 libraries that reported recently for statistics, 63 out of 70 have library directors that work 32 to 40 hours a week, which places Southampton in the 10% of Massachusetts libraries for our population group that do not have directors that work at least 32. So I just wanted to share that piece of information with you, that what we're asking for is realistic.
Thank you.
Any other department head? Oh, yep.
I want to know how many hours the library is going to have with the director.
Same number they have now.
How many do they have?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
And the library's open 38.
The library's open 38.
Well, after July 1st?
Well, the town hall has been on a 30-hour week for 20 years now, and they would like to come back to their 37 and a half hour also. How can you, how can you adjust to give the library?
We didn't.
Well, who's giving it?
We didn't. They asked. We didn't.
Why don't you put the town hall back on 37 hours?
Because we didn't do the library. They asked. We didn't do it.
Well, after July 1st, they're going to have more funding in their budget. They have more hours.
This budget has an increase of half of what the request was to get the library to full-time.
Right.
So if it was 26 now, we're probably going to about 30 or 32.
Thirty?
So that's what this budget would do, would bring the library up to about 30 or 32 hours.
Similar to what town halls.
Well, I think so, 37.
That's what they wanted.
Because I just, I want...
No, we'd like, no, we, we know that...
I don't care about my office. I'm talking about the other. They're consistent later.
We've, we've, we're reaching a consistent basis now across the board. Yes, sir?
May I address just for a second?
Just us, not, not to anyone, please.
I'm sorry.
Your, your comment to us.
Oh, I just get, the people start yelling. I can respond to the question about hours. The library has four sort of employees. I don't think any other employee has 20 hours at the library. There's two benefit positions there besides the director. So I know that the town hall is also short on hours. I don't know for sure, but I imagine that all of you do work for 20 hours that you're open. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if everyone in the town hall has 20 hours work.
30 hours.
30 hours.
30 hours.
But we've now, we're now on a, we're trying to reach a parity. Something, but not everything.
Right. This is especially related to department heads. This is the only department that does not have a full-time. And that's to do with the issue here. That's what we're trying to do. And I think that we are willing, we're going to compromise this year, obviously we should go and compromise.
Yeah.
And a lot of things that the library has, we've been very patient for the last 10 years, 15 years.
He's been hot.
And so a lot of the...
Everybody's patient, and that, and that goes to show how evenly distributed the pain is, because everybody could stand up here and throw darts at the wall and hit us with them. But anybody else?
I just question you. If it's not full-time and everything, but what I think is, it's true. It doesn't seem like there's any department that is full-time. Is that what we're saying?
Uh, there would be...
They're all full-time except in the library.
But I think it's not full-time. It's just part of the...
30 hours. She's 30.
30 hours. That's what I think most people have brought back to the board. That's full-time. That's what I mean, is she's a department head.
But she's...
We have fire and police and highway are full-time.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no. All right, we don't want to get...
There is a discrepancy.
I, I don't want to get off into, we don't want to get off into the weeds on that one. Famous, one of our members is often saying.
Did I say that again?
No, I said it for you tonight.
Thank you.
I have a question for the finance board in regard to the capital. The program contains you that you said that we, we have to probably just change for the doors, the hemispheres, the water. So that is, that is something that's going to be on hold, you're saying, for that year?
Yeah. On the capital plan?
The capital. It's required by law and...
Yeah, right.
So I guess I don't understand. How do we do with capital? Will we go capital budget out of free cash? Is that what we do?
Oh.
No.
We don't have any money to fund the capital plan. It was a nice plan, but it's not funded anymore.
Okay.
Some, parts of it.
We're, we're, we're definitely...
In the early times, we were putting money away out of the budget to, into stabilization fund to fund those capital improvements. That lasted about two years. And then the economy went south, and our aid went south, and since, correct me if I'm wrong, '09? We haven't put money in there at all.
Yeah, we lost $350,000 from the state last year alone. So we'd like to do certain things.
We have a school that needs a roof desperately at this point in time.
But we can't do things. We have two cruisers with 100,000 miles on them that are becoming unsafe to drive for the patrolman.
Any other, any other department heads? Anybody?
Two questions. Just asking for your information. Recently, we were audited by DDP, our fuel system. The staff, we have a DDP system, and we're going on a DDP system. There's rules, regulations for capturing our fuels, and that'll be a tune of $18,000 to $20,000 for upgrades that will be needed in the next 16 to 18 months.
Six to what?
Sixteen to eighteen months.
You're talking about the tanks at the highway garage?
Oh, that's correct. Tanks are fine. It's not that. All piping, double wall piping, and gel double wall piping. Pump staff's be upgraded. Tanks are sufficient. They are double walled, basically, but the, the upgrades will be close to 20 from designs. We have additional five to six.
How old is your system?
It's about 16 years old.
So it was stated DDP 16 years ago?
It was stated DDP until the DDP took it over, especially in fire services, if you recall.
So, so Ed, where are those funds?
I don't have the funds.
Coming from?
Just letting you know that's what I need.
It's going to come from us eventually.
You usually do magic with grants and all sorts of things.
Slide it in.
Mike, can I make a comment? I mean, it's my...
You can say anything tonight.
No, I'm just, you know, you, you put your time in here, and, and you, you see the trends that go on, and I'm just going to wax, wax and wing whatever a little bit here. But when Prop 2 and a half was in, brought up and passed in this state, how many people live in this town, Mr. Whiteley? 1,800? Somewhere on there?
1983 it was passed.
Oh, yeah, it was.
Right. So it was a cowtown. I mean, it was a small rural town, but now it's a bedroom community surrounded by three cities: East Hampton, Holyoke, and Westfield. So the town grows, but we go up by new growth, which is about 100 to 200,000 dollars a year and 2.5% of the budget. Okay? So that's what the growth is. Every year, you can raise things a little bit, and this is how it goes. Okay, fuel costs go up 30%. Healthcare costs go up 30%. The money goes away. The state funding goes away. And pretty soon, Proposition 2 and a half holds a town back from growing. No one wants to pay more taxes, but the truth of the matter is we're not paying for what we owe. We're not... We're not paying for filling the highway contracts right now. We don't fund the highway itself 52 weeks a year. The town hall is closed four days out of five.
One day.
I mean, obviously, one day out of five. It's been a long six years. But what I'm saying.
I think you're done David.
No, no, what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is that at some point, you have to reset the dial. And you have to reset the base, and you're going to really have to look at a Prop 2 and 1/2 override to pay for what you have to pay for. And that's all I'm going to say.
All right, let's, anything else?
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Relative to the capital improvement plans, so 8,000 was appropriated for.
No, it wasn't appropriate.
While was made available for.
No, we wanted, well, we wanted.
He's talking about for this car.
For fiscal year, for June 30th.
Oh.
There is 8,000 dollars for a line item for shopping for the library. 5,000 dollars has been recommended potentially for FY '13. I'm not disputing the numbers, I'm just asking for clarification. As your new library director, in order for me to make sure that information, knowledge, and resources are available universally to this community, it is a greater priority for me to use, to equip our doors and meet the, meet the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This 8,000 dollars has not been tapped. Is it possible for me before June 30th to have those doors fit to the price of 5,000 dollars?
If we get the 3,000 miles back.
Well, we were, we were actually.
For the 3,000 dollars being, well, just switch the around.
But if it voted out at town hall, it wasn't shopping?
Yes.
Well.
It's, there's two things. The capital plan actually is, I believe it, you can, if you didn't spend it by June 30th, you can use it until the project's completed, but it is for that specific project, and it was voted that way at town meeting. So we could, you could not spend it, and then we could vote the other money, I suppose, if that was. But what we were waiting for is an updated quote for the doors. We, what we got from the library director was a couple of years old, so we also didn't have an updated quote to put in there. So it may not be 5,000 anymore. I'm not sure. For the doors, for the doors.
For the doors. I, it just concerns me that meeting the Americans with Disabilities Act is going to be bumped until fiscal year 2013 with no guarantee of that money. I'm sympathetic to the fact that the money's not there. I'm saying as your director, I'd rather put money into making sure that everyone can get into the library that wants to get in, and I'll deal with book crates and books that don't have a place to go myself.
That would be up to the capital improvement committee, I suppose, if they could do that. Because the money would basically go back into stabilization if it wasn't spent, and then it would have to be revoted as a new item.
Don't we, I make it a way to some of this? What possibly could be a danger of losing if it weren't approved?
That's correct.
Well, did you vote in at the town meeting to revert 8,000 back to 5,000 now?
It could be an article on the warrant, couldn't it?
Maybe.
Resend last year's and vote.
It's a net 3,000 back to the.
It's like an old school. Except that we don't know that.
So who's going to take care of?
You should get an updated quote before you make any decisions. Money.
All right, who's going to take care of that?
We could draft, I could draft an article if you so desire.
Well, would you, I'll need to get a new quote for, for you to draft an article.
You can draft the article and just plug the numbers in.
Yeah, the article exists.
And trustees, trustees will need to vote on this before May 12th.
They need to be at the town meeting to defend it also.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you have an article in the warrant, you need, someone needs to be there.
That's fine. So you need me to tell you the number?
Yeah, well, we can work, we can.
Okay, thank you.
We can do a sum of money to post the warrant and then put the money, dollars, in a town meeting too, so.
Okay. Anything, anything else on budget? Hearing none, we have to move on.
Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Payroll warrant. Oh, and while you're all here, upcoming events, May 2nd is the annual town elections, 12 to 8 p.m. May 3rd is our first select board meeting after the election with a new member, will be reorganization night.
Got drugs this weekend, Saturday.
Oh, the drugs drop off. And May 17th is the annual town meeting. Be there, be square. Okay? I think I ran through quick. Now you got it. Payroll one.
Payroll warrant.
Thank you for reminding me.
Wait a minute. Your statement. Problem with ZBA payroll?
Thank you very much.
I don't know. What's the problem with ZBA payroll, Diana?
My understanding is it wasn't paid because the proper paperwork hasn't been submitted.
So are we approving with that not getting paid?
You don't, I think it's just, it's just for information purposes.
Okay.
I think we're trying to work with Ed to figure out what's going on.
All right.
Yeah, you can't, it's not on there, so it's not like you're not going to not approve it.
Yeah, all right, so payroll.
So payroll warrant, P 11 dash 24, total amount of 200,000 dollars.
Do I have a motion? Now you got a motion, do I have a second?
I didn't realize we finished with the hearing, that's the hearing, that's over?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill Warren, we have nothing, TCF's, nothing. Town Administrator Report?
Yes. The only thing I have for you is I have a draft of the warrant, which you've seen in your attachments already, so I just wanted to let you know. I wanted to have it for you to sign next week. The only question again I have is sort of about the ordering of the articles. If you have any concerns or would like to move them around, please let me know. The last four articles are sort of, they're not money articles, there are other changes. The article to accept chapter 18 for the retirees coverage, that's something Chrissy asked to put on, that has to do with our medical coverage. We'd like to be able to move all of our retirees with supplemental insurance into a supplemental plan, which will save the town and the retirees money. Article 16, we have this, this piece of land known as the corner of Madison Avenue, Buchanan Circle, that we've had for a couple of years. Finally worked it out so that we would like to dispose of it. And because it was taken as a, as land of low value, we have to have an article on the town meeting warrant for the selectmen to be able to dispose of it. So that's that article.
Is there a vote required?
That's a property knowing you can build on because it's a historical right of way with the old.
Yeah, it's not a built-up lot, so, yeah. So we don't have a buyer, but this would allow us to put it out for bid. Article 17 is for the Concom, to change the Concom bylaw, which I will have, I have one copy of today. I think I've sent this to electronically. It's still being reworked by town. Oh, actually, I think it's completed now, but the Concom is going to be meeting on it next Monday to finish it up. But I did put the article in, we're going to be deleting a section of the bylaw and putting in this new bylaw. And then Article 18 was an article presented by petition.
In the first comment, we have nothing.
So who put the charter commission in? That's new.
Came in by a petition.
It came in by a petition.
Which one?
Charter, last one.
18?
That was, I.
I think Reggie.
Someone forwarded me the list of people that signed it.
Reggie scanned it and here's a copy.
You got it scanned.
Yeah.
It would be a charter commission.
To decide whether we want to go to a mayoral final.
It could be that or just to establish a charter, like more home rule, which actually wouldn't be a bad idea, probably.
But I mean, it could be anything between what we are, what we are now to a mayor.
Sure. Could be a change of government.
Okay. So we have until next week to approve this and sign it?
Yes, so what I'll do is I'll work on that article we just talked about tonight, and that's the only addition. I presume at this point that you don't want to add an article for non-binding resolution for the Greenway. Would you, should we hold off on that right now? It seems like time's a little short for that.
They wouldn't be able to get a presentation.
What we're going to do though, I did talk to the Greenway Committee after, after this meeting, we are still going to have a public meeting directly before town meeting because we, we tend to get a better attendance that way, and we'll be notifying all the abutters. So we'll have a public meeting that day to unveil the feasibility study, and then we can go forward.
Right before the town meeting?
Before, right, directly before the town meeting at 6 o'clock.
6, 6 p.m.
6 p.m., yeah. And we'll publicize that. And we'll also ask Representative Olver and Senator Knappick, because they both have asked to be included in the information. So perhaps they might attend. We'll find out.
How did the floor come up?
Came up good. They finished it today, it looks really, really good.
Walk in and you're looking at it just.
You did.
Don't do that.
All right. Dude, he's his last mark, his last legacy.
All right, we did that.
Oh, and the annual report, the other thing you asked me about, Mike, is I have a draft of the annual report. I sent it out by email, I didn't get any comments back, but I wanted to make sure that you had a chance to review it, and if you have any changes, I need to get that to Reggie as soon as possible.
I didn't have any changes. I didn't have any.
Okay. Do you want to have another day to take a look at it? I sent it to you previously by email. Oh, and actually, here's a copy of the report.
I did, why didn't, I didn't realize that my comment was necessary.
Oh, and on top of this, this is a letter that you asked to send out to the department heads about end of the year spending. So Mike, if I can get your final original, I'll have Bob sign that other. But in this packet is also, oh, this is my evaluation, but also the reported site.
Thank you. Looks fine to me, I think Jess wrote it. All right. Got to get witty, get witty for me.
Witty. We signed everything we need to sign, it seemed like we.
All right.
Oh, we didn't sign the payroll.
No, we never signed the payroll, we voted it, we didn't sign it. I didn't scratch it out. Okay. Charter communications, timber cutting, I don't think there's anything that we need to deal with anymore.
Hey, I have one suggestion if I'm there.
Yep.
Diana?
Yes, I'm sorry.
The Building Reuse Committee is supposed to meet on 12?
That's correct, May 12.
Okay, we have certain reports that are due to the, either Building Reuse Committee or the town hall, I don't know who. Or select board, who are, who are they going to go to?
I believe the reports will go to the Building Reuse Committee, and we should have the board meet with them, I guess.
I would like to make a suggestion that we have a joint meeting with the Building Reuse Committee and the Select Board on May the 12th, if the reports regarding town hall deficiencies are ready at that point.
There's nothing on here.
Doug, you can't switch my thing?
I'm sorry, no, I didn't.
This is pretty important. Okay, we have problems at the town halls, and we've had reports that are pending on it.
Okay.
What's going on? And they are due to the Building Reuse Committee. Their next regularly scheduled meeting is on May the 12th. I would like to recommend that we also attend that meeting so we can read all the reports and we can analyze them jointly.
That's not our meeting night?
No, it's a Thursday.
No, that'll be on a Thursday night. Building reuse meets on a Thursday.
What time do they meet? Six?
Seven.
7 o'clock.
Will you send out a notice?
Yes, absolutely.
Reggie send out a notice and we'll all meet.
Yes. And I will attempt to get the report ahead of time, so you guys can review it ahead of time.
Thank you. Yes, right here, right here, yes.
We'll, we'll post, we'll post a meeting for that night.
Yeah.
Yes, a joint meeting with you.
The handles on this side of the building are rusting already.
Are rusting?
Yes.
The door handles are rusting, they should have been stainless, I would assume, they're not stainless.
They seem like they might be for inside instead of outside.
Yeah. So there, there's rust on that door handle, and there's rust on that door handle.
And the keys don't work either, so I, I did.
We should make a list of these things, deficiencies, we've got a year.
Yes, exactly, that's a warranty issue, so, yeah.
They got brushed chrome or something like that, and not stainless for outdoor handling.
So I'm going to contact the companies.
Okay, good, thank you, Dave.
That away. All right, we have an invoice here for PVPC, not on the agenda, but.
No, but it's, it's one of the ones for the housing rehab, so it's really just for you to sign it. It's a drawdown that then goes back to PVPC.
They're drawing down 1,842.06 of the grant. Somebody want to make a motion to sign this?
I'm moving on.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This requires more all of you to sign. I'll send it that away first. All right, we done, we did all the issues, I think, except for the last one, Town Administrator Review. And Jess, you have the floor, I think.
On the Town Administrator Review?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. What I have done is, we don't have the copies of that.
Yes, they're in the packet.
They're in the packet.
They're in that packet, I just, separate packet, I just handed.
Oh, okay, so I didn't have that, okay. So as we've done in years past, I gathered independently from the four other members of the Select Board, their rating numbers and additional comments, if any, and then put all those together, identified as select, BOS 1, BOS 2, BOS 3, 4, and 5, of course, and then printed those out. And then Diana passed that out to you. My understanding is there's a concern about, some folks wanted to know who ranked who, who ranked what. And there is a provision in Mass General Law that says if we aggregate our responses, is basically what we're doing here, we're not required to do that. So I think it's important for us as a board to be able to not come under any sort of political fire for how we make a rating or a ranking. So I'm suggesting that we continue with this method, and if necessary, review it with the town council, where I don't even know who 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 is, frankly, so that's. Any case, this is, at least from my perspective, my part of the task here is to collect those numbers and any additional comments from yourselves, and then compile those onto one sheet. I just wonder if anybody else on the board had any particular ideas about responding to a request for how did a particular board member rank a particular employee who reports to the board?
Well, Reggie called me with, because of the request, and that, I didn't understand that's what the request was. I thought the request was just for the sheets. I didn't even realize, she never said to me they were looking, they were looking for the individual sheets, but I knew they weren't identified, so maybe I assumed that wasn't but I knew they weren't identified, so maybe I assumed that wasn't an issue, because they couldn't identify us from, from the issue. I guess the request was to get the...
Yeah, well, let's see if that's what indeed the request was, because I interpreted the request in two different ways. One was who ranked what, and then the other one was this expanded.
Yeah.
So this is what I provided today to Reggie. So my suggestion would be to wait and see what happens.
I think this is what, what they're looking for.
I mean, it basically identifies, I think what she had said is if it's, since it's anonymous,
you know, each person's ranking needs to be visible, instead of just the totals, which is how you did it. So I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I think...
Okay, so in case it comes back up, that's the back story for all of us.
Yeah, and I think we just have to maintain the originals of these that we gave you.
I would think, but if they weren't done...
Who got the originals on these?
I, I haven't.
So you're... No, no, they're not, no.
They're not named.
They're not named, but the original document has to be available.
They weren't done in open session, either.
No, but they're still our collective.
Okay.
I think, I think you gotta make, I would think better practice would be to maintain those, even though you can't identify who they are, who did what, and I could, frankly, at this point in time, I wouldn't remember how I scored, because I sat and thought about it at the moment, you know? Now I wouldn't recognize.
Good.
Yeah, as long as they're anonymous, I think Mike's right, we could just have the backup of each sheet with, with this, which is what we did previously as well.
Yeah, so...
And I just wanna add, I, I did do my self-rating, I didn't do individual comments, but in the end, I did have a comment, just in general, that I would really like to have goals and objectives set now for next year, so that I can have something to be working towards. So now that this review is done, maybe after town meeting, we could sit down and work on some goals and objectives for next year.
The second part of what I wanted to say tonight, Mr. Chair, was once we get through town meeting, is, and I've collected some data here, which is town administrators from a couple of other towns in Massachusetts, for example, too, that Reggie very nicely got for me. And different ways of rating performance, which are somewhat more subjective, and the individual, him or herself, as well as incorporating the goals, and my sense would be that if we have the goals be both agreed by and aligned with the Select Board goals and the town administrator, then we would obviously increase the chances of achieving those goals. Which may sound a little theoretical, but...
All right, so we've done the evaluation.
For now, but we'll, we'll...
We're gonna refine it later.
No, we'll be moving into a different phase, which will be a combination of our goals, the town administrator's goals, and moving forward.
Well, that's to set up next year's, but for this year's, I think you should vote to adopt this as the two thousand and ten calendar year evaluation, if you're satisfied with it.
Two thousand and ten or two thousand and one?
It's calendar year two thousand and ten. Oh, that's what we said.
We're a little behind. We're a little behind. We're only a quarter...
Whatever you wanna call it.
We're only three months behind.
It's pretty good compared to most organizations.
So we have to adopt that?
I think you should formally adopt it, because it's...
Somebody wishes they should move it.
I move to adopt this town administrator's review.
Evaluation.
The evaluation.
Second.
Year two thousand and ten.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Mark, you're sitting there, and I...
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing. Representing the Park Commission Chairman, Ian Trippco, who has served on the Park Commission for twenty years, is going to not, is not rerunning her, and I think that the town should be charged for services found after twenty years of service on the Park Commission.
Yeah, absolutely.
We are meeting tomorrow night, it will be our last meeting, but I think, and I don't know the procedure, but the town should recognize her for her service.
What's the name of the park on Helen Drive?
We haven't finalized that, as I command a motion to name after her.
That's done, you can...
No, I'm making a motion to do that, that's my motion.
Right.
My last night, I can do these things, okay?
We decided not to name the park after somebody. Right now, it's tentatively going to be called Crossroads Park. Right now, we haven't finalized anything yet, but we decided as a commission not to name it after somebody. It is amazing.
What about, would someone make a motion that we send a certificate to meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
And can Reggie generate a certificate that fast?
I think so.
Yeah, can, that someone would make a motion that we generate a certificate of appreciation to be handed to, are you chairman?
Yes.
Give it to Mark, to hand to Ian tomorrow night?
Some will, some will...
Second that, definitely.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if we had known that earlier, we would have done it on our own, but thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Did you know, yeah, right. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
I would look closer to the end of the day.
For the end of the day.
Or at least the afternoon.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else that I'm missing?
Make a motion to adjourn. I thought Dave is buying a solid dinner tonight?
I'm sorry, sir.
At all, Paul.
Part of my, not being familiar with the agenda tonight, I went through it, I forgot it worked, but... I'm Scott, or I'm showing the cemetery commission?
Yes.
And we have one question, I think brings up into the budget timeline, because listening to the discussion, I'm not asking why.
That's reasonable.
But I do wanna mention that we have quite a few expenses, some of which are covered from the town budget, others are covered from the sale of cemetery lots, and a couple of, a couple of accounts we have that are cemetery stone restoration, et cetera. What's been looking at this year, though, is gravestone restoration. We had a pretty harsh winter, got quite a few stones that are in tough condition. I wasn't on the commission at the time, but digging through our records, back in oh-five, we paid ten thousand dollars to restore sixteen gravestones. And according to our superintendent, who has been walking and counting, we're looking at more than thirty that really are in need of restoration. So discussing sources of income, et cetera, and knowing the budget's a hike, we came back to an idea that I believe has come up a couple of times before. It's to form a Friends of the Cemetery Committee, maybe it has a little, sounds a little strange in the Friends of the Library, but it is a cultural, a lot of people appreciate history.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, I've got some burial gravestones there, you know, a lot of people have a motion attached. We believe that this would be something that we need the board to approve, or condone, or sanction, or commission. So my request to the board is that you all move to hereby sanction and commission. And what we're proposing is that, given this sanction, we would go ahead and start doing the legwork of how to organize it, and bring something back once we have a firm grant.
Is it your intention that the Friends of the Cemetery would raise money and have a fund available?
They'd be very similar to the Friends of the Library, they just put in a little time, figure out ways that other people can help support it.
I, the only thing I think we have to do is, I think we have to make sure that we do it legally, and...
That's one you can't hear, it's a...
I think we'd better talk to town council about it.
Yeah, I, I don't, to be honest, don't think a Friends group is affiliated with the town. I think that's just a separate formation, but I, I will double check, yeah.
Well, how's the Friends of the Library so...
It's, 'cause...
I think it just, they set up as like a...
It's a private, it's a private group.
It's like PTO, they set up their own group, and sometimes they set up a five-on...
Because if we set them up, then, then they're...
It's not a town affiliate.
Then they can, budget problems all, all to themselves.
So you might have been, you might have been a little over cautious as we look to it.
But it's good to know, it's good, because obviously, if you're raising money, that certainly, I, I just wanna, I'll double, I'll double check. But Scott, I also wanna mention, too, in case you don't know, we had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about, or the highway superintendent had asked the board, and I wanna tell the board this, too, about the fact that we had kind of transitioned some things out of the cemetery expenses and into the highway expenses. We did that in two thousand and nine.
Yeah.
And at that time, the library expenses, I think, were about seven thousand, and we reduced it down to two that year. But while we did that, we increased the highway department budget, so that another, an additional staff person could be hired to take care of the cemeteries. When Ed and I talked to Judith at that time, who was the chair, you know, we did identify the fact that you had the sale of cemetery lots. You also had that perpetual care account, and that's upwards, I think, of about thirty thousand dollars right now. I don't, is that, do you have that?
We have about eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. I don't know if you've been using it. And then, and the sale of cemetery lots, of course, well, that's got thirty, that's got thirty-five. And then you also, in the gift funds, already have a cemetery stone restoration account, which has twenty-three available, twenty-two thousand three hundred available right now? Okay. So I just wanted you to know that you have some of that money already?
We usually, you know, spend half the borrowing down this year for cemetery stone.
Right, no, I understand, I'm just letting you know. And in addition, we've done some cemetery stone restoration with CPA money, too.
I was just gonna say CPA would be a logical place to go.
Because it's historic, so you could also get, look at that option.
You could go to CPA with a request for some dollars.
And part of this is new memories. Gathering what we know from, you know, the veterans who handed things on, and started to, you know, similar knowledge, let's say, so...
So you're gonna check on what it takes?
I'll check on if there's any affiliation with the Friends.
Other one, it's not that they can do...
As soon as I start talking my way through it, it doesn't make sense that we do it, because then they'd be subject to all of our government problems. They must, they, they're probably a private group, but maybe we can find where the charter for the Friends of the Library is, and they could simply duplicate it and...
I think I would say... ...for what you, if you have, proper.[1694.44]